It's okay.
I do know how to project.
No. Nope, doesn't work. Okay. Everybody ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we're gonna call this meeting order for December sixteenth of two thousand nineteen. My name is Jim Reistracher, I'm the chairman. Next is Tom Quinn and my far right is Judith Lee. You know, before we start, I just wanna say something. You know, we got only three members here today. And we usually have a board of five members that do the voting. Well, when your petition comes up and one of the members deny it, it is done. So, we're gonna give you the option, if you wanna go through with this, we can. If you don't, please tell me when I read your case. And it's up to you whether then we'll do it at the next meeting when we might have four or five members. So, I just wanna let you think about it while we're going through our agenda here, okay? Everybody can hear me?
Thanks for the heads up.
Okay, okay. Well, we're gonna start, I would like to welcome everyone here today and our viewing audience to the December sixteenth of two thousand nineteen, City of Davenport, the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. And of course, I introduce myself and the members here today. The staff present is Scott Coops and our attorney is Mallory Hoyt. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-member deuditorial board established by the state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strict application of the current zoning laws. We also grant special uses and rules on administrative appeals. Are there any corrections to the minutes of our last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Any old business, I see no old business. New business. Our first item on our agenda is request HV nineteen dash twenty of Acme Sign on behalf of Five Below at nine oh two West Kimberly Road for hardship variance to install an eighty-seven point seven-five square foot sign with which will exceed the amount of allowed wall signage by thirty-one point seventeen square feet. Section seventeen point twelve point zero six zero point one point four allows a maximum sign area fifty-six point fifty-eight square feet for this commercial unit wall sign. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Scott?
Scott Coops, Community Planning, Housing Development. So, this case is for a wall sign, it faces Kimberly Road, oh, it's back, I don't know, it's three hundred more feet, but it's back quite a way from Kimberly. This is what the sign is going to look like. And there's been some upgrades to the front facade of the strips under there. Kinda shows the decorative pieces there to the left and then around the sign of Five Below. So, they're doing a rehab, kind of a facade facelift there. This is just where the unit is, showing where the sign is located. We sent out our notices to the two hundred feet of subject property, we did not have any comments either in favor or against. As you know, we are going to be, I've mentioned this in a couple other meetings, so, we are looking at revising our wall sign code to allow larger signs because a lot of the signs, when you put along the facade, if you stick to the square footage prescribed by the code, it doesn't really look to scale. It looks smaller than what you would expect. And so, we're revising that, but we haven't had that approved yet at this point. So, in our analysis, we looked at the four items that you consider, strict application of the ordinance, physical surroundings, applied to the unique circumstance, and essential character. And staff found that the variance was met the requirements of all four of those conditions and we recommend approval as proposed.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff?
Nope.
Scott, is this a plastic sign or a metal sign?
I would defer to the petitioner.
Okay. First of all, do you wanna proceed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you wanna come on up and give your name and?
I guess first, my name is John Jarvis, Acme Sign. And first off, I want to apologize for making you guys show up on a Monday instead of the one it was scheduled. It's, if it was up to me, I would've postponed, but Five Below has a deal going with the landlord, and I don't know exactly what's involved, but they need to have their lease signed before the first of the year. Now, the question, those letters are individual letters, Five Below, they're LED lighted.
Are you happy with the quality of the sign?
Personally, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I, it's hard for me to say any more than what Scott said already.
Yeah.
Granted, I think that there's gonna be more cases come up as far as for variances unless the code gets changed somewhat. And I don't like to come before you guys, and I know you don't like to have somebody come every month either. And this is backed by Ross Dress for Less. And Ross Dress for Less was put in before the code change, and they're probably, what, ten times the amount of sign that this is, Scott? Something like that?
Yeah, I didn't check the percentage.
It's a large difference. And they're straight back off of Kimberly Road, so you, and there's an incline, they're back so far, and it is probably still not readable that much from Kimberly Road. But it helps direct people after they get in the parking lot on where they are in the shopping center.
Commissioner, do you got any questions for Doug?
I have a question.
Question for Scott. Scott, you mentioned a potential change in the ordinance. Right now, I think it's one square foot per linear foot of facade. Is there any talk about what that would be going to?
Well, we're trying to define what the facade is, 'cause some of these facades go up above the typical portion of the wall, some don't, and some have windows that take away a lot of facade, so we were looking at maybe at one point five feet per linear foot, and still keeping the minimum forty, or maybe raising the minimum forty to fifty or more, fifty or sixty, or something like that, but we haven't gotten to specifics yet.
I know that these people's next location, at least what I was told, they were gonna go to Dress Barn, you know, that's out behind Chili's and next to Hyatt Deon Fifty-third Street. And that facade is like huge in being tall and wide, and, you know, when you start, but it's not all that three or four hundred feet, and you get eliminated, or eliminated a lot of square footage when you're down to the one foot. I'd almost say you might end up with two feet, and you're not out of line.
The old C two code was two feet of signage for every one linear street frontage.
Okay. Staff recommends approval, right, Scott?
Yes, we're recommending approval for this.
Yeah, the other thing, the other thing that they sometimes do is do like a percentage of the square foot of the wall. Where you got the height and you got the height and the width, and then fifteen percent or twenty percent of the wall's square footage.
Okay. Well, Doug, I wanna ask you again, do you want us to proceed on this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well.
I might not, but Five Below wants to, so.
Okay. So. Is anyone in the audience in favor of this request?
Favor?
Yeah. Well, no, if you're gonna say something, you gotta come up and give your name and?
Please don't.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll let them vote.
Okay, okay. Well, we got three people in favor of this request, am I correct? Okay. Well, to make the record, I gotta have you come up and give your name and in favor of the request.
Each one of us?
Yes.
While they're getting up there, I will say, I looked up the distance, so the facade is five hundred and fifty feet from Kimberly Road.
Okay, okay. Just your name and you're in favor, and if you have any little comments that you're in favor of, they'd be glad to?
Yeah, Brad Morrison, and I'm in favor exactly for what Scott mentioned. It's a scam issue for some signage, and yeah, I think in this case it really fits.
Okay, thank you.
Over House, I would agree with everything that Brad had to say.
Okay, thank you for coming up.
John Chesney, I also am in agreement with Scott as a business owner as well. And owning a business is tough as it is, so to actually have a sign that looks proportional to the building is really important to the business's success.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this request? Okay. Applicant, do you got any final comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. More discussion? Okay. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve HV nineteen dash twenty.
I second.
Okay. We need a voice vote on this?
We'll do roll call.
Okay.
Lee?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Reistracher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your variance been approved?
Thank you.
Okay. Our second item, of course, Mr. Tim Schaefer, is he here today? Again, do you wanna proceed? You're gonna need three votes to pass, and if one member decides not to vote in favor, it's gonna be turned down or denied.
Do you have clarification on that?
Well?
If it's five members here, does it have to be three, can three two pass?
If there's only three members, we have a board of five. It's not a majority, but if any of the members vote or deny, your request fails. So, you need all three members to vote yes. Okay? If you wanna proceed, we can put it on the agenda for next item when we will probably have five members.
So, for any item to pass, I'm better if you get five, four, three, you need three votes in favor.
When will the next meeting be?
The ninth of January.
If we don't get three votes tonight, what's the process?
Well?
So, if you go forward, that's, then you're basically accepting the fact that you need the three votes. The only way then, should it fail, you would have to have either someone who voted against it make a motion that's successful to reconsider the request, and if you do that in enough time, you could do it at the next meeting, but you have to have the motion made by someone who voted it down. And so, if there's nothing significant different with your request, so if you're submitting the same request twice, it essentially isn't going, you know, it has to have something substantially different to it for them to vote on. We'll wait.
So, Scott, they will be put on the next agenda.
You can, yeah, you can, if you wanna?
Do we have to make a motion?
Table, that's.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to table this request.
I motion to table this request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, you, okay. See request of Riverbend Sign Works, we have the same request from you. You need three votes to pass. If you had one denies, it's your decision.
I think I wanna move forward tonight.
I agree.
Okay, okay. Request HV nineteen dash twenty-two of Riverbend Sign Works on behalf of the Ridge at forty-seven fifty Utica Ridge Road Suite one hundred for a hardship variance to install ninety-five square foot sign, which will exceed the amount of the allowable wall signage by fifty-five square feet. Section seventeen point one two point zero six zero point one point four allows a maximum sign area of forty square feet for this commercial unit's wall sign, as the unit is less than forty feet in width. Staff, Scott?
Scott Coops, Community Planning. So, this is again a similar case to the one we had, the first case today. The unit is less than forty feet wide, so the minimum we, the largest their sign can be is forty square feet. Now, the one that they have proposed here is approximately fifty-five square feet. In staff's opinion, it doesn't look overly large and proportional to the building, and it would be similar to what we would approve with the code if it did get amended by council, if they approved our submission and our next obvious code change. They met our four conditions, and staff recommends support. And if you need a little background for where it is, it's kind of across from the old Gold Jim to the Family Y on Utica Ridge Road.
Isn't that some new strip mall?
Right, there's three or four units there.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. You want to come up and present your case?
I'll go, if anybody gives her a hard time.
First timer here, so.
Just take your time, you'll do fine.
Thank you very much, John Chesney, I'm the owner of the Ridge Soul Supreme Court with my husband as well. Obviously, we're requesting this variance so the sign can be proportional to the building. If you're to see it head-on, the approved signage that would go on there would honestly look pretty silly. It's pretty small in comparison to the large, I don't even know what you'd call that thing, like a?
Just a facade.
Just the facade of the building. And I will add too, I don't know, do we have a photo of the entire building?
Uh, the whole strip?
Well, yeah, the whole strip, just on our end is where this is. The rest of the building has smaller facades, so it's just the biggest section of that building that we have for this business. And?
I'll just, I need to state my name.
Yes.
Brad Morrison, Riverbend Sign Works. A couple things that we're also dealing with, so in addition to being set back, it's about two hundred, over two hundred feet back from traffic that moves along there. So, in addition to being set back, it's also set down, so it's sort of, it's not as easy to see as a building that would be at the same grade as the road, 'cause it drops down in. And then with the traffic, I know it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, most people go a little faster than that, it seems like, on that particular road. But just with the, with the speed of transit, it makes it more difficult to see it. So, when we shrink it down to be that, that square footage, it really impacts the branding. It makes it look, first of all, it looks really small to scale, and it becomes nearly unreadable just with the size. So, and there's kind of a couple reasons why I made sense to make it a little larger. It's, from a construction standpoint, so they're dimensional, so it will be letters that stand off. Unlike the last sign you saw that was internally illuminated, this one will have external illumination on it. So, it will be, it will be lamped externally so that you'll see it on the building. It's a light enough colored background that it'll have a nice contrast.
Commissioners, you got any questions to applicant?
Nothing for me?
Nope, no questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Staff would like to say that there is no freestanding sign proposed with this business at this time, so they won't have any freestanding signage.
Okay.
So, that will be it, yeah.
There'll be a sign on the back, but as far as what's visible from the street, yes.
Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there any opposed to this request? Applicant, you got any final comments?
I appreciate the experience of coming down here, 'cause I've never been down here for a zoning meeting before, so thank you for having us.
Yeah, well, sorry we had to switch the days. Any board discussion?
No.
Well, I asked for a motion.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead, Jesus.
No, I don't have the number, please, go ahead.
Stand by.
I move to approve HV, request HV nineteen dash twenty-two.
Second.
Another voice for it, or is this?
I'll do it. Lee?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Reistracher?
Yes. You've been approved. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us, we heard there was gonna be lobster bits, a little bit.
No, it's probably not as good as what you serve.
Okay, our final one is?
Can I ask you a quick question? Scott, will we receive any sort of notice or anything?
I'll email you the line.
Perfect, thank you, Scott.
Our last request, Terrence, I'm sorry, I didn't, if I don't pronounce the last name, Saboan, what is it?
Chavellian?
Yes.
He's actually on the phone, he was not able to travel here for medical reasons.
Okay.
I'm in his place.
Okay. But you're aware of the, if one member of?
I have the homeowner coming with me also, so.
Okay.
Yep, you do understand.
Do you wanna proceed?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. Last item is request HV nineteen dash two-three of Terrence, and again, I apologize.
Chavellian.
Chavellian, on behalf of Mindy Richards at thirty-three thirty-one Hobson Avenue for a hardship variance to encroach into the required front setback with a detached garage and to maintain the existing gravel driveway. The proposed garage would be set back thirty feet from the front lot line, twenty-eight foot encroachment into the required fifty-eight foot setback. Section seventeen point zero nine point zero three zero point A point four point C prohibits detached accessory structures in the front yard. Section seventeen point one zero point zero three zero point one point four requires hard surface materials for vehicle areas. Scott?
Scott Coops, Community Planning. So, our code wants to have accessory structures have a less prominent role, and that's why they're required to be either in line with the house or behind the house. Even though this property here, the setback for this property is twenty-five feet, so they meet the principles that set, but accessory structures have an additional burden of being set back farther than that. The properties on this, most of the homes on this street, as you can see, are at or around the twenty-five foot mark. There is one exception, the very first property, when you come in off the street, that property is set back. That also happens to be the only paved driveway in the neighborhood. Everybody else has gravel driveways in this, this street here. So, there are two issues that we're looking at, we can vote on them separate, we need to vote on them separately. One is the pavement, and then one is the location of the garage. So, this is the set, the site plan from the petitioner. So, it's thirty feet from the property line to the garage, and that's a total of fifty-eight feet from the property line to the existing house. And the side property line is going to be well over our required, it's gonna be six feet, we only require four feet. So, they need other setbacks other than this, that front yard setback for accessory structures. So, here's the neighborhood, that's the house there behind the red dumpster. And you can see the hill slopes away, so there is significant cost associated with building a garage back there because of the slope, they would have to have a lot of engineering to make it come up to the grade of the street. This is the contours, kinda shows the grade. We didn't have any comments either for or against this, either email, phone, or letters or anything at all. In doing our analysis, they have met all the four conditions, and staff recommends for approval as proposed.
Do you have back a screen, Scott?
Which screen you want?
Uh, the one where you're showing the hardship.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That, that one, yep.
So, this should be the same as what the staff report that you're saying to us?
So, there is gonna be a lot of grading and thing to get that garage?
There would be if they put it back further where it's required to be. They don't have to do, they don't have to build the garage up if they put it within thirty feet of the front property line.
Okay.
Or not within, but just beyond thirty feet.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for staff?
Yes, are we making the decision just on the garage, and then we'll come back and make a decision about the driveway? Or will you provide information about?
It's up to you if you wanna, I recommend talking about both at the same time when the petitioner comes up, and then just when you vote, then separate the two issues.
Okay.
That's what I recommend, but you could do it the other way.
So, the, the other driveways in the area, all except one, are gravel?
Right, the, when you're coming off of Fairmount, and it would be the property on the south side of Hobson right by Fairmount, that property has a paved driveway. I don't know if it's paved all the way to the garage, 'cause it's, but I know it's paved immediately off of Hobson, and it's kind of up a little bit, and it takes a dog leg over, and that house is set back a little bit further than everybody else is out there. But that's like three or four houses to the west.
So, is there a problem then with keeping this gravel as opposed to paved?
Technically, when you put in a garage like this, you need to meet the existing code when it goes in, so it should have a paved surface, 'cause that's what we require. However, as I stated, this neighborhood is a little bit more unique, and then almost everybody out there has gravel driveways. So, we feel it believes it beats the standards for hardship variance for the gravel.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Is staff recommending that we should put a hard, or they have a hard driveway, Scott?
We're recommending in favor of both requests, both the request to set the building back thirty feet from the property line and the request to leave the driveway as it is.
As it is, okay.
Are there any drainage problems or anything with the current driveway?
No, I mean, not that I'm aware of, it slopes away towards the back, so the water wouldn't be directed on the neighboring properties. It would, it would just stay on the subject property, similar to what it is now.
And staying gravel, it would probably be helpful with a little more permeability, yeah.
With gravel, yep.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff members? Okay. Thank you, Scott. The applicant, wanna come up or representative or to give your request? Want to give your name, please?
Jessica Williams-Long, El Triad Roofing and Construction.
Mindy Richards, I'm the homeowner.
Mindy Richards, I'm the homeowner.
Well, tell us what you want, like, us to...
Okay, what do we want? No, for you guys to approve the setbacks, sorry, we're nervous. To approve the setbacks because it will create a very, like, a large expense on her to move the garage back and the gravel concrete.
How big is the driveway itself?
How big is the driveway?
How much paving?
Right now, he said it's at thirty feet, he said if we have to move it back, it'll be an additional thirty feet.
So currently, it's thirty feet long?
Where that grid line is, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then the quote that was in the staff pat report?
Mm-hmm.
That was be to pave it at this location, which would be eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Or was it the further back location that you'd be certain?
What was the further back location?
Uh, meeting the requirement, which would be behind the front wall of the house. I'll have to look that up, what the quote says.
Full foundation is, which would add over twenty thousand dollars to the cost of the garage. There's also a concrete slab in pergola that was put there by previous owners.
Yeah, so if it went back to that, like, would we have to remove all of that to put it?
Yeah, so...
He said that if it had to be moved back, he would have to remove existing, the existing concrete, fill it in and do what? Build a foundation wall and what, sorry, and backfill it, and pour the concrete.
And that, that could actually cause problems with water, I would think, with all that fill?
Right, you'd have water coming down the hill towards the garage.
Yeah.
Or naturally, it would normally go downhill towards garage, you'd have water coming down against the, the new foundation walls.
Yeah.
I did find the quote that I was looking for, so a thirty by thirty slab is the eight thousand dollars. That's paving it where it's at, that location, it would be more than that if they put it back further, just for the pavement.
So the building would be over twenty thousand dollars additional, yeah?
So I don't know if this is a question for staff or the, or the homeowner, but I'm assuming, is there anything in the, in the request that would require the front of the new structure to be at least in line with the front of the neighboring home? Like, I wouldn't want to see it get closer to Hobson Avenue, if anything, it'd want to be a little further back, so it's not to obstruct the view of the neighbor.
Right, so if, if that structure was blocking, you know, if it was, so let's say all the other homes were in line with thirty-three thirty-one, staff would probably likely not be recommending in favor of this request, but because it is back and in line with the homes, we have recommended the way we did.
He said that the garage will be in line with the house next to him.
Right.
Okay.
For emergency vehicles, I mean, does that, does that play into this, Scott? Does, does like the fire department, anybody review this for like getting in and out of the property for fires or...
Whether it's at this location or further back, it doesn't make any difference to them.
They would just park on Hobson?
Well, if they need to get anywhere, they just, they just go where they need to get, they don't really worry about it.
That's right, they don't worry about it, yeah. They just park and run.
And I don't know exactly where the nearest hydrant is, but we've had them review staff, or review building plans before, like, and that wouldn't, that's never been an issue.
Okay, well, thank you. Do you have any more comments, or are you all done, or?
Any more comments?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
So Scott is recommending that we vote on, there's like two partially requests, one for the driveway, one for the building location.
Okay.
So, are they both, I guess I missed that, is there both in, are they both in the same request here?
Right, they're the same number, it's just two aspects of it, one aspect is
Gravel driveway.
Yeah, variance to maintain the existing driveway, and the other part of the variance is the location of the structure.
Okay.
Before we go on, is there anyone in the audience in favor of this request? Okay.
My counter.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this request? Seeing none. Does applicant got any final comments? Okay. Okay. Board discussion? None? We asked for a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the setback portion of the request of HV nineteen dash two-three.
My second.
Do we need a voice vote again?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Okay.
Quinn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Straight home, ah, straight home, Rice Dropper, sorry, there's...
I should say no. Yes, yes. That part of your motion's been approved. Okay, now we got another motion. Judith, you want to make that motion?
I make a move to approve request HV nineteen twenty-three as it relates to the driveway remaining gravel.
I'll second.
And roll call, Lee? Quinn?
Yes.
And Rice Dropper?
Yes. Your variance has been approved, both of them. Okay. Is there any other business that we haven't, well, there is, we do have business, and, you know, I've been on this board the last year, or two years, and Judith has been here, and I think we're gonna miss her. She was the one that goes to many seminars and, and understands this better probably than I do, but it was always great to get her insight on this, and we're gonna miss you, Judith, and
Thank you.
And we wish you luck, and I've been there where you're going, so I know exactly, it's gonna be a lot of hard work, and it's, but I know you're up for it, and you're gonna do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Best wishes for...
Yeah, best wishes to you.
Congratulations.
I'll be a problem for city from another point of view.
Wait till you get Scott up in front of the microphone with the whole council, chambers filled.
I can see it now, Mayor Lee and the next...
No, 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 I have no ambitions, no ambitions, but I really appreciate the opportunity to be on this board. I've learned a great deal, and working with everybody, I've asked a lot of questions. I will continue to do that on city council. But I will take the experience from zoning board to my next step.
Well, Judith...
Gives me a good foundation.
You can always call Scott at any time.
I do.
I like, are you speaking first?
Okay, and Mallory, she'll always call Mallory.
I've seen Judith in our council conference room almost every week since the election, doing her homework and preparing for
That's good.
Yes, and I just had my meeting with my Kyle group for the, the commission I'm on for that, and, yeah. Lots of meetings about flooding. I've done a lot of that.
It's a great job.
Well, you know, I look forward to being helpful with that, that issue, because of my experience and, and background, I think. I'm, I'm looking forward to working with everybody in the city for that.
Well, we've talked too long, keeping Scott and Mallory here, so I make a motion, I can't make it, but can I get a motion adjourned?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, for coming.
Thank you all for coming down on a special day.
No, thank you for that, I really just...
You too, Mallory, thanks for coming.